Two quarters and they're doing a project for the State Board of Education. They're looking at charter school authorization and monitoring process. And I want to start by saying it was, it was difficult for them to focus initially on the question because there were conflicting signals from various folks in the field, I'll put it that way. That's the best way to say it. But I will introduce the team, starting at catcher, Matthew Decker, I saw him in action literally yesterday, Emily Stevens, and Sam D. So you guys took it with? Thank you.
And I'm Joe Nation, this is Christine Tarr, who has been here.
Great, so thanks so much for coming. As Joe mentions, we've been working for the last two quarters on this project for our client, the California State Board of Education. And our focus has been charter school oversight, oversight and monitoring, we kind of use interchangeably here, and also support for charter schools. So first, let's start with a roadmap of where we're headed today. First, I'm going to go through some definitions. Sam will talk a little bit about the motivation for our project and why it's relevant right now. We'll talk through our research questions, as well as the methods and findings that resulted from those questions. And finally, we will go through some recommendations. So this, this might be obvious to some of you, maybe not all. What is a charter school? So it's a publicly funded but independently managed or run school. It has its own independent governing board, and it is distinct, but from traditional public schools, but still a public school. A charter authorizer is the entity responsible for evaluating, first, the initial charter school petitions, then monitoring a school's progress and organizational viability during the five years between initial petition and renewal, in California's case. And it's important to note that authorizers don't directly manage the charter schools that they've authorized, but they are responsible, to some extent ultimately, for the performance of their viability. In California, we have three types of authorizers. We have local education agencies or local districts, we have county offices of education, and the State Board of Education, which is our client, which actually authorizes 23 schools, most of whom have been rejected at the local level and appealed up to the State Board where they became a school. So the State Board of Education, that's our client. To just clarify what we mean by that, that's our 11-member body. It's a policymaking board, as well as, to some extent, a governing board, is our client. And also associated with our authorizing is the Charter Schools Division, which we'll call the C S D. That's the division in the California Department of Education that the S B E has authorized or has delegated its oversight duties to. So the S B E is one that makes decisions around petitions, but the C S D is actually doing the on-the-ground monitoring. And finally, the Education Program Consultants is even sort of more on the ground. They're the staff members in the C S D that engage throughout the years with charter schools. So you'll hear us refer to E P C.
So then, why does our research matter? We'll start with the theory of charter schools. In theory, charter schools are supposed to offer school leaders the chance to exercise autonomy and innovate with different educational programs. In exchange for this additional autonomy, they're subject to additional accountability, meaning that if they can't prove their model, if it's not effective for students' families, then effectively they get shut down. Unfortunately, when a school fails, however, people who end up bearing the high section out of costs associated with that closure are students' families. And a vivid and recent example of this is with the Paramount Chartered Academy that recently closed last month. The day before they decided to close the doors, students were sent home with a letter informing parents that they would no longer be in operation. So parents and families had less than 24 hours of notice to find an additional school alternative. You can imagine the kind of interruption that that might pose to a student in their educational career, and also the associated challenges with actually integrating into a new school once you find one. So this is particularly salient in California, where we see that as a share of national charter schools, California is overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly represented. We see here that nationally, California represents 90% of the entire charter school sector. And in terms of the number of authorizers, California represents 31% of total authorizers across the country. This is all despite the fact that among school-aged pupils, meaning students under 18, California only contains about 11% of them, according to the most recent set of data available. In addition to the large size of the sector, we see that the California charter sector is actually growing at an extremely rapid pace. We see here on the Y-axis that this is capturing the net change in number of schools, number of charter schools, and on the X-axis is capturing net change in number of authorizers. And this is between the periods of 2011 and 2015. You can see in the top right-hand corner that California is actually far and away outlier on both of those measures. And so in considering, in considering both the large externalities that students' families face when schools close, and considering the large size and the rapid growth of the charter sector, it's extremely important that the State Board of Education has a clear set of criteria of how they're going to be monitoring these schools. And one other note, it might be tempting to think that because there are so many authorizers in this space, that authorizing and monitoring is actually being dealt with well because of the ratio between schools to authorize. But actually, this is more of a liability, and we'll get more into this later in our presentation, and this is due to the fact that the law, as it's, as it's constructed right now, allows any L E A, Local Education Agency, which is like a school district, to become an authorizer essentially overnight once a petition goes through. And they essentially have to build out an entire department of functionality that's associated with all these different monitoring practices. And there's not a whole lot of legal guidance, and it's an undeveloped field of research. And so for those reasons, it actually becomes more of a liability. And so our research aims to support this emerging field and contribute to the body of best practices around charter monitoring.
So in reference to that objective, we looked at three research questions. First, what are the current challenges that the C S D and S B E authorize schools in the S B E portfolio? What challenges are they facing? Second, what are best authorizer practices in oversight and support of charter schools that we've drawn from national sources and from the literature? And three, what factors are correlated with charter school closure? Before we dive into the research questions, we needed to understand the current state of authorizing in California and in C S D in particular. So what is the C S D currently doing during, as I mentioned, this five-year window between initial authorization and the renewal petition, which goes to the authorizer? So the charter oversight is happening in this five-year window, but what is, what does it actually entail? There's actually very few oversight requirements that appear in California's education code that are tied specifically to oversight. There's criteria involving, involving initial petition, involving renewal, but for those five years, there's only a couple of things that are required to do. The authorizer has to identify the contact person at the school that they're monitoring, we call them the school leader. They have to conduct an annual site visit, and what that entails might vary from authorizer to authorizer. Three, they have to monitor the school's fiscal condition, again, a pretty broad mandate. And four, they have to, this is kind of the broadest umbrella, they have to ensure compliance with the charter agreements, which is the agreement made between the charter school and its authorizer, and also various reporting requirements that appear elsewhere in that code. So the literature, including the National Association for, or National Association for Charter School Authorizers, N A C S A, has developed sort of three main domains that oversight activities might fall into, so three buckets of responsibilities and activities. One, the authorizer has to, is responsible for ensuring that a school has a sound educational program. As Sam said, this is the core of what the school is supposed to be doing, and also that it's in alignment with the charter and initial petition. Second, it needs to make sure it's in strong fiscal health, so it is able to implement that educational program. And third, make sure that it has sound governance and operations. Again, that refers to complying with the law and also having a transparent governance system. So there's a set of C S D-specific practices that are not captured in the law that we mentioned, and that also fall within those three buckets we just talked about. So the E P C is assigned to individual schools in the S B E-authorized portfolio. That E P C is responsible for conducting monthly conference calls with the various school leaders that they are assigned with, and there tends to be a set of standard topics or questions that are, that are asked during that time. And then they're also responsible for preparing yearly academic and fiscal milestones for the S B E. So diving into our research question findings, so first, what are current challenges facing the C S D and S B E authorized charter schools? So taking a step back to our general methods, we, we spoke with nearly 40 individuals, both charter school leaders, experts in the field of authorizing nationally and within the state, as well as C S D staff. But for the purposes of research question one, we are just looking at the interviews that we conducted with the S B E-authorized school leaders. So as I mentioned, there are 23 schools in the S B E portfolio, and we were able to do, conduct interviews with 12 of them. So we had reached out to all, all the school leaders and were able to get 12 on the books. Because we ended up doing qualitative analysis, the relatively small N size wasn't so much of a concern, and it was actually a pretty good yield. So, and I'll talk a little more about the methods that we used to generate our findings for that, but we also used C S D documents that were provided by the C S D. Some of those included communications between, between the school and the E P C, which would give us a better sense of, kind of allowed us to triangulate with the interviews. So generally speaking, what, what was our process or method for getting these findings? So as we can see, we have, we have some high-level themes that we identified, this is the first of a few. What we did was, we looked for themes that appeared across various, the 12 various interviews. We used the same set of open interview questions for all of the interviews. However, we would also ask follow-up questions that made some of the conversations deviate a little bit. But the, the themes themselves derived from the data rather than categories that we had done previously. So, and that allowed us to kind of capture certain things that, that we might not have been aware of initially, but that the school leaders could identify for us. So the main finding that, or need or challenge that they had identified was that 11 out of 12 of the interviewees identified staff turnover and lack of consistency of the staff within the C S D as a, as a major issue, and something we're going to talk a little more about. And then 8 out of 12 expressed preference for a kind of relationship between the E P C and, and the school leader that would be characterized as supportive, collaborative, characterized as a partnership, rather than, you know, the alternative that was often given was gotcha or punitive relationship. So this is the kind of relationship that school leaders wanted to see. There are also several frequently observed or salient themes that emerged around data in particular. So nine out of 12 said that they, school leaders said they wanted to understand the rationale for particular C S D data requests or benchmarks, and we'll talk about a couple of examples for those. Seven out of 12 said that the C S D feedback had been too slow. We'll also talk about several examples. And then seven out of 12 said that the C S D data requests were sometimes burdensome, and several also mentioned that they were occasionally redundant with other reporting requirements they had across the state.
So how do you gain these findings? We pulled them up into four main buckets of challenges that the S B E faces in the monitoring process. The first of which is limited human capital. As Emily just mentioned, 11 out of 12 school leaders that we surveyed mentioned that high staff turnover was a chronic issue within the, in getting in the way of progress as a, as a school leader. In addition to that, we observed that at the beginning of our engagement in September, there were three vacancies for the education program, educational programming consultant position. Additionally, the C S D S division didn't have a director, and it was only up until last month that they actually filled that directorship position. And there's still one vacancy at the, at the E P C level. And when we talked to Judy Hall, who's the office manager for the C S D division, she had mentioned that there's actually just a positive of applications that are coming in, of the applications that are coming in, the quality of individual, just they don't have the background, they don't, they need both the operational experience on the school side, as well as the knowledge of the law, as well as how the C S D conducts its monitoring. And it's really challenging to find something that fits both of those criteria. Additionally, we found that there's a sense that people do not understand why some, some data is being collected, and how it's actually being used to make a determination about the quality of a school. A perfect example of this could be the way that the C S D actually constructs their financial, annual, annual financial report. There are, there's one individual financial consultant at their office who aggregates this annual report for the State Board of Education. And the criteria which they use, though, might seem reasonable to monitor, most, if not all, of the school leaders aren't officially certified CPAs, and it's unclear to them as to why these metrics are being tracked, and what the rationale is behind some of these thresholds. As a result, we believe this could be connected to some of the compliance issues that the C S D has been facing. People are less likely to turn in the documents that you need if they don't understand how it's going to be used, especially if they feel, as Emily mentioned, that it's going to be used to harm them in some way or catch them in a bad moment. Additionally, we found that the feedback processes, the feedback processes that the C S D engaged in with their school leaders is on aggregate super delayed. One, the financial reporting example comes through again here. The S B E reviews an annual financial report, once a year, as the name implies, and at that point, that report is aggregated by the audited actuals that the financial consultant at the C S D constructs. Those audited actuals actually aren't, aren't actually submitted or due by this, until December 15th of the following year after that school year closes. So by the time that the S B E is actually examining the financial health of the charter schools within the portfolio, it could sometimes be about two years down the road from when that financial issue was initially started. And just to give you a sense for the timescale of how long two years could actually mean, Paramount Charter School that we talked about in our mission motivation side was in operation for about two and a half years, and they ultimately shut down due to financial reasons. And so the slow feedback process can be extremely consequential for ongoing school operations for charter school leaders. Lastly, we found that once, assuming that the data is collected and they're engaging in some sort of long feedback process that's been institutionalized, such as the financial monitoring process, if they find an issue in that process, the authorizer actually has very limited options in terms of responding to that. There's really three legal tools that they have under their belt, and that's a letter of concern, revocation, and non-adules. The problem with the letter of concern is that it's essentially a stop on the wrist, and even the letter of concern can take up to a year cycling through the desks at the C S D before it actually makes it onto the school leader's desk to inform them that this issue has been raised for a moment. In terms of revocation, this rarely happens, and it rarely happens because the legal and resource costs to this are extremely high. There's an enormous amount of time and energy invested into the due diligence process in order to make a successful case for revocation. In addition to that, because the law is so open-ended, there, you can almost anticipate a legal fight, which is also going to take a lot of time and energy out of your already constrained operations, both for the school leader, as well as the, as well as the authorizing body.
Just a quick clarifying question. You mentioned that there is not transparency around the type of metrics. What, what are they collecting? Is it only financial?
No, it's not only financial, but a lot of the metrics are actually stipulated in the M O U that the S B E has with their school leaders. And they'll, they'll collect metrics around educational programming as well, which is an obvious metric that you want to track if you're looking at a school. But because charter schools are supposed to be introducing some innovative educational programming, oftentimes the traditional metrics that we'd use to measure schools, such as like, I don't know, state tests, doesn't fully capture the value-add that the school leaders are proposing when they initially apply, apply to become a charter school. And so you have all these specialized sets of metrics that are stipulated in M O U, and obviously they can get really unreally in terms of validating the constructs, figuring out what is the appropriate threshold, what's possible, and feed this one to the progress, because all of that's conditional on both the M O U, the kinds of people that, the students that they're serving, the kinds of staff that they're employing, also the constraints at the C S D level. Yeah?
This is more of an orientation question. So when you're saying the challenges, can you talk about what ends that we're meeting these challenges at, or like what ends we're trying to pursue and these challenges are coming up with? Because it's, it's a little unclear just from your framing.
Yeah, so in terms of the ends that we ultimately are looking for here, and apart of this, just my personal philosophy, having worked in the charter sector for five years before coming here, in my opinion, the charters, we're agnostic as to what the charter authorizers definitely aren't responsible directly for the outcomes of the school is producing. However, they do play a key role in making sure that they're monitoring the right things so that there's some feedback process and the school leader has a fair shot at demonstrating the viability of their programming. We're finding that in the data, and we'll get into this when we dive into some other metrics that we, some other data that we collected. Most schools are not closing down because their educational program is failing, they're closing down for other reasons. And so in my view, that signals to me that schools aren't getting a fair shot at testing whether or not their innovation is actually working or not, because they're closing down due to operational reasons, not educational efficacy reasons. And ultimately, what we want to do is create an authorizing system that, and this is partially coming from Mike Hurst, as his director when we were initially negotiating the friends of our project, he really wants to set up, he doesn't want to apply legal pressure on, legal pressure on smaller authorizers who are also engaging in this work, but what he really wants to do is become a model authorizer. And really, the, the term model authorizer is up for debate. It's not like, it's not clearly nailed down, there seems to be an emerging consensus, consensus in the authorizing field on what that could mean. And generally, what we're kind of approximating towards is helping school leaders get a fair shot at demonstrating efficacy of their educational programming.
But also, maybe I can add, being able to catch out really severe issues that might lead to like middle-year closure, as is the case at Paramount. So it's, it's from both the, from the school's side, wanting to be able to show their model, and also in terms of the public trust that the authorizer embodies.
So now that we've gotten a solid background on the authorizer environment and identified some of the needs in the authorizer-to-school relationship, we want to turn outward to see what to answer the question of, what are the best authorizer practices in oversight and support for charter schools? So first off, we want to define what is a best practice, and specifically for our situation. A best practice is a practice that achieves a desired outcome, that is verified by research and case studies. And so to, to answer this question, we, we did just that. We conducted a literature review of greater than 23 sources of both peer-reviewed journals and of professional, professional organizations, such as N A C S A, the National Association of Charter School Authorizers. In addition, we conducted 26 hours of professional observations of CARSCET Conference and of another organization called FIGMAC, both professionals in the charter authorizing environment. And we've been considering, why did we, why did we aggregate the certain lists that we did? We had the, we had a certain criteria of which best practices we, we wanted to present to you guys today. And so currently, as one of my team members mentioned earlier, there's not a large amount of empirical analysis that clearly states that these five are best practices for authorizers, given outcomes data in, in many schools. So given the lack of that empirical analysis, we needed, we, we aggregated the most commonly mentioned best practices in our literature review, and then verified them, those best practices with some of the, with some case studies that we've seen from across the country. So let's jump into the first one. And we have six of them today that we'll talk about. So the first one that we found in literature and verified by case studies was to use a multiple-measure performance frameworks. And what we mean by that is there are, there's a, there's a certain rubric that an authorizer can use to evaluate, evaluate a charter school against, based on a couple, on a couple different metrics, being financial, performance, and governance. So we found that this was a pretty common best practice amongst literature. The second is to determine clear intervention protocols. And what this really is, if you can sum up in one word, is transparency between the authorizer and the school. Just making sure both sides know exactly when the authorizer is going to intervene, on what specific metrics, at what specific levels. It, it does a lot of things in regards to maintaining autonomy for the school and, and giving the authorizer direction on when, when to act. The third is to make data-driven decisions. We've seen in a lot of literature that the strong authorizers make good decisions based on a lot of data. And it's something that California can do, we're just a little bit behind in that. But this is, this is one of the, the strong, the strong best practices. And then the last one, to track finances and governance proactively. And we, proactive is an important word, because we know our client, and hopefully many other authorizers are tracking financial data and governance currently, but we want it, proactively pushes it from just being maybe annually or quarterly to maybe hopefully monthly or bi-weekly or something like that. Track it proactively so that when a situation does arise, you don't see it four times a quarter or wait to see it next year, before maybe the whole school closes down. And so we've got two others. This next one is to hold authorizers accountable. If you've been following the structure of authorization to schools, you'll see that an authorizer keeps a school accountable. But in a lot of situations, and in particular, in particular for our client, there is not an author, there's not a group that keeps the authorizer accountable. There are very few examples of this across the country, but in each of those, the authorizer-to-school relationship has been very successful. And then our final one that we'll talk about today is to have realistic expectations for the role of authorizers. Emily mentioned at the beginning, authorizers do not run schools, they do not decide curriculum, they're not necessarily trained to do that. But what they are trained to do is to conduct these support and monitoring practices. So when we're, when we're looking to enhance authorizer ability, we have to be careful not to change the profession, but just kind of uplift them and give them some certain tools that they can use.
So our third recent question goes into the specific factors associated with school closure, and this came up in one of their questions earlier. And I made the point that essentially, education programming, the quality of educational program isn't the deciding factor in most charter school closures, and we'll see that data here. In order to actually arrive at our, in order to arrive at our findings, we conducted a literature review of what seems, what do research seem to be saying about what causes charter school closures. We also took a look at C D E data that captured operation status and merged that with an ed data source that gives school-level characteristics. And by merging those things, we can kind of runs, we can run some statistics to show what are the typical characteristics of a charter school that's been open, what are the characteristics of one of the set of charter schools that have been closed. And then we also break that down by charter schools within the S B E portfolio and charter schools within, just writ large in California. And so first, one of the, one of the most salient reports that came up in our review was 2011 report from the Center of Educational Reform. And essentially, they found that nationally, 42% of charter school closures are due to financially-related reasons. This pattern holds in California, according to the C R report, where we see about 37% of charter schools closing within the state of California are due to financial reasons as well. Notice academics, though a significant factor in school closure is nowhere, it's roughly a four, but actually the financially-related school closures, at least in the state of California. Now, what does that mean in terms of the S B E portfolio? One concern we might have is that the schools within the S B E portfolio are, for whatever reason, different from the rest of the South Side of California, and we have some good reasons to believe that, because these are schools that are rejected at the L E A level, which might signal that there's additional political pressure locally to get charter schools out, and they were rejected at the county level. So when we did a more granular analysis of the charter schools that had closed that were within the S B E portfolio, we found that actually four out of the five charter school closures from the last five years were due to these financially-related, related issues. And so we see this pattern of finances, not educational programming, being the driver of school closures. And in terms of cross, triangulating this with our ed data, C D E merged data set, we found that enrollment seems to be, seems to be statistically significantly different from schools that are typically currently operating in 2017, with schools that are closed in 2017. We see that there is an enrollment drop by about You see that there is an enrollment drop by about 200 students. And the reason why this is significant and supports our previous hypothesis is because enrollment is directly and functionally tied to school levels of funding. Schools will get X dollars per pupil and if that pupil is an unduplicated student, even a student of high need, they get additional funding for that. And so this helps us, it's not completely definitive, but it does help give additional evidence to the hypothesis that we're forming here. Additionally, you know, you might notice that we have NA here and this is due to when the data was pulled when we conducted this analysis. This was early in January 2017 from the CDE website. And so at that point, schools like Paramount hadn't actually closed and the data set hadn't been updated or something like that just yet.
Great. And so now that we've again gone through some of our background research and then what are the needs, what are the best practices and what are the reasons for closing, we want to make some recommendations to, actual recommendations for, for our client, the SBE. Before, before we do so, we have two constraints that are really, really important for our recommendations. The first one is that we want to maintain school autonomy. This is a huge thing in a lot of the charter research where, you know, as we, we talked about, the authorizer doesn't run a school, they're not really prepared to run a school. We want to make sure that there's definitely separation between the school leaders and the authorizer. The second one is that, and this was directly from our client, is that we can, we cannot recommend anything that, which requires legislative change. Given the current ed, ed policy environment of today, it's very difficult because there's a lot of complexity and it's very slow to try and make any sort of legislative change. And so as, as we make our way to the recommendations, let's just recap really briefly some, some of our findings. So research question ones were, what are the needs? What were the needs of the charter to offer, authorizer relationship? And the second one are, what are the best practices? You'll see here that we only have four and when, when I spoke last, we had six. These four are the only ones that do not require legislative change. The other two definitely require legislative change, which is why they're omitted here. And then this last one, this last level is what Sam just spoke on, some of the main reasons for, for charter school closure, being weak finances and, and low income data. Okay, so, so our recommendations, we have three of them. And the first one is to agree on key financial metrics to track. You know, as Sam just got done saying, specifically with Paramount and then a lot of other charter schools in California, financial reasons are, are, are the largest cause of school closure. So there are a lot of things to track and, and it's, it's going to be kind of a laundry bag of, of different variables, but if, if, if it's something like days cash on hand to where a school can get to a certain point, if they're not making any progress or they have, they have maybe 60 days left to, left to stay afloat, maybe tracking, tracking that level of cash on hand. And we only want to make recommendations because they were tied to some rough findings. And so they, so this, this particular finding-